Tonight for the town hall, name of the meeting took us 42 consultants, seven RFPs, 24 attorneys before we thought it was politically correct enough to advertise our meeting. So you can imagine how complicated it is for a large, big bridge project.
You mean you really only had six attorneys?
Licensed attorneys. So just so you know, tonight is not a political town hall meeting. The objective is not to have one side try to sway the other side or convince another side. So unlike the town hall meetings we see with our politicians, that's not what this is designed to do tonight. This is not part of the decision-making process either. This is a meeting for the community to voice questions and concerns and hopefully get a lot of factual information from our panel. It's not always easy to give a yes or no answer, but we've asked our panel to try and do that as much as they can. Keep in mind, everyone here has the best intent for the city of Glenwood Springs. We all love living here and we have a stake here and want to see the best. It's really the chamber's goal and the DDA's goal tonight to facilitate a question-and-answer meeting to help citizens understand the issues and viable solutions that have been identified so far. And a lot of the input that has come in, we've actually, consultants and people working on it have used a lot. So tonight is really your opportunity as a community and as citizens to really get direct questions and voice your concerns. We'd really like to stay away from opinions and maybe biases and really get the facts out as to what's going on with the various projects that we're talking about. And we really hope that the community will get past the "let's study this to death" and "let's, you know, commission another, you know, eight million studies for a lot of dollars" and at some point get to an action mode to where the, really, the city of Glenwood Springs and the residents, it's going to be a benefit for all of us and our visitors. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our moderator, Clark Anderson. And please think of, you know, have your questions ready and please keep it in a question form or a concern form.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye. (applause) Hey, everybody, how's it going?
All good.
Awesome. My name's Clark Anderson. I work with the Sonord Institute. I run the Glenwood Springs office, which also works throughout Colorado. But I also happen to live right over on 11th Palmer, right up to Montmartre de Coquelin. And I work in downtown, so I walk across Grand Avenue every day, twice a day with my dog. Have you seen the guy with the big, round dog? It's always off a leash, but that's me, and I know I'm breaking the rules. So I just want to try and set the stage a little bit for tonight, talk a little bit first about sort of what we're trying to do. I think Mike set that up pretty well. I want to add a couple of thoughts. But then also, I want to talk to you all about sort of what responsibility you all can take in trying to make sure this is really effective and that we get something out of this and that the community is moving forward. So just to add to what Mike said, you know, the goal here tonight and what the chamber and the DDA are trying to do is to help all of us address some really tough issues. And let's just acknowledge that these are tough issues, and these are issues that you all have been wrestling with as a community for decades. And so we really have to respect how difficult the issues are because that helps us respect each other and the positions we have. It's okay to disagree with each other tonight because these aren't clear black and white things. Somebody holds a different position from you, it's not because they're an idiot, you know? Well, they might, but let's leave that aside. It's because these are tough issues that are tough to solve. And as Mike said, everybody here tonight, if you took your Wednesday evening, I know, or is it Tuesday or Wednesday? (laughter) Thinking about tomorrow, I'll do one of these all night or all week. I'll be here all week, so. If you guys took your Tuesday evening, you know, to come to something like this, you care deeply about your community, and we all do. Everybody cares about Glenwood Springs. Everybody loves the downtown. And that leads me to another thing. You know, the chamber and their efforts to try to, and the DDA, and their efforts to try and help us move through these and have a civil and informed dialogue about some of these issues, you know, they set up this meeting, but they also set up some focus groups that were intended to help kind of tee up this meeting and really hear from a lot of people about what are you concerned about, what are really the issues? And we used a lot of, we used, pretty much, every question you're going to hear tonight from me came out of those focus group discussions. So we talked to over 70 people. It was a long day. I was only there for half of it, and it was really interesting, and I really came away with the feeling that, God, people love this town, and that is an amazing thing. It makes me proud to live here. So one thing I want to challenge all of you to, and this is hard because it goes completely against the hardwiring of our brain, but I want you to open up your minds to different opinions and ideas, and it really does go against the hardwiring of your brain. We have this biophysical phenomenon, and it results, it results in something called confirmation bias. And that means the information that you take into your brain, you filter it in such a way that it tends to agree with things you already believe. So you watch the news, you might think you're taking that in objectively, and you're not. You are filtering it in, and you're taking the information, you're fitting it into your worldview, and it's really hard to overcome all doing. Nobody does it. And the only way that you can overcome it even just a little bit is to acknowledge it and say, "I'm going to, I'm going to really try to open up my mind and listen to other perspectives." So I want to challenge everybody to do that. The other thing I just want to move into a little bit now in terms of the game plan for tonight is, we've got a lot of stuff to work through. We've got a great group of panelists. I'm going to let you guys abuse yourselves in just a minute. But we also have all of you, and this really is about hearing from everybody here. We're not just going to do a Q&amp;A with these guys and let you guys listen. You guys are going to be doing a lot of talking tonight. But in order for that to happen and happen effectively, we all have to be really smart in terms of our time. And if you've got comments or questions, you've got to be concise, you've got to be clear, and try to come up with a way of saying things pretty briefly. Because a lot of people actually emailed me this week saying, "Hey, I'm looking forward to this town hall. Please try and keep people from going on the 15-minute rants," you know? So we all know, we care about these things, but just be aware of that. Okay, so here's the game plan. Here's how we're going to do it. There were about five themes that really popped out from the focus group meetings. We're going to try and cover all of those. One of those was, I'm looking over, I can't read the agenda from there, my eyes have gone bad. One of them was sort of just trying to understand, how did we get here? You know, what is the, what is the decision-making processes? What is the information that was used? People had a lot of questions about that. Do we have enough information as a community? Have we done the critical analysis to understand where we're at and make good decisions going forward? So people wanted some background, both about the projects that are happening and the information that was used. Two, there's these series of projects. So the bridge was a big project, the access control plan, and the interest in those has really reawakened a lot of interest in a reroute of Highway 82, or a bypass, as it's often called. And so those are three other topics we're going to talk about. The bridge, the access control plan, and the bypass. And we all know that there's some relationships between those. We want to try and better understand what those relationships are, what each of those things are, and try to have a discussion where we come out of here tonight knowing more about those issues than we came in with. And then the third, or the fifth and final topic we're going to cover is, let's think broadly about transportation in Glenwood Springs. Let's pick our heads up and think about the big picture and think about long-term solutions that are going to work for our community. We heard that over and over again from people across all sides, frankly, of these different issues we're talking about today, said, "You know what? What I would really like is if we thought about the big picture, really tried to figure out, how do we improve transportation? How do we improve mobility? How do we make it easier to drive? How do we make it easier to drive? You know, I commute through town. I don't even live here." So regardless of people's position on the issues, they really thought it was time to make sure we were thinking comprehensively around transportation solutions in Glenwood. So those are the five things we're going to do. I'll reiterate them, some background info about the projects and how we got here. The bridge, the access control plan, the bypass, and sort of looking forward for transportation. During each of those topic sessions, I've got a few questions that I got from the people that went to the focus group. But then we're going to take a few minutes in between, you know, moving from topic to topic to hear questions from you all. So here's the deal, though. We won't get to everybody's questions. So if you have a question and I'm about to move on, I'm going to move on, but I'm going to say, I'm going to have Jillian write down your question. We're going to get to it in the second half of the program tonight, which is open discussion. And if we're all efficient with our time, and like I said, we're all responsible for getting us there, if we're all efficient with our time, we should have a solid hour at the end to just have open dialogue about these issues. And I know that's something everybody would like. So if I say, "Hey, that's a great idea. That's a great question. We're done with question times for this topic. Do you mind if we hold on until the open discussion?" What do you say? No, I know, but we're modeling behavior here. You go, "That sounds great. Thanks." All right. So before we get started, I just want to run through a couple of ground rules, too, that I'm going to enforce tonight, and really, actually, I prefer if we all enforce them. Because like I said, I think it's everybody's responsibility in these types of community discussions to enforce really good civil dialogue and get along and understand that we have to do this all together. So Jillian's going to help me because she actually wrote these up earlier. The first one should be obvious, but we don't do it very often. Please listen to understand first, not debate. Try not to spend all your time listening to somebody thinking about how you're going to rebut their idea. Maybe just listen. Please respect everybody's ideas and positions. We will not question people's integrity or character. We just won't tolerate the attacks as a group tonight. I already mentioned this, but please be brief, be clear, do the point. It's respecting everybody else that has something to say when we can get to our point quickly. Similar idea, try and stay on topic. I know that's hard, but if we're talking about something, try and keep focused on that particular topic. So this one is constructive candor. It's a little, we don't use that tool often enough, but the point is, you know, speak your mind, but be constructive. Don't just say, "You're wrong, and I think you're an idiot." Say, "You're wrong, and I think you're an idiot, and here's why."
But...
Well, be nice. Be tough on the issues, not on the people. If we do these things, we should be fine tonight. Is that all of them?
That's all of them.
All right. So is everybody cool with that?
Yes, very good.
All right. Well, let's get started. And like I said, guys, actually, why don't we quickly do a very, very round of introductions? So here you are, and we'll go through there. Dan, let's start with you. You got it.
My name is Dan Bruson, and I'm the Region 3 Access Manager for CDOT. And I started from the very beginning of the access control plan, so I know a ton of stuff about it. Thank you.
My name's John Haynes, and I'm here with a group called Citizens Save Grand Avenue. And we are the folks that are not excited about what CDOT is doing, and we're here to try to ask them why they're doing what they're doing. So we'll see what kind of answers we get.
Hi, my name is Joe Ellison, the CDOT Program Engineer here in Glenwood Springs. And I'm one of the guys that is excited about what CDOT is doing, so hopefully we can have some open minds tonight.
And is this working?
Yes.
I'm Jim Charlier. I'm a transportation planner. My firm is based in Boulder, and I've only been working on this project for about three weeks, so it's been a fast get-up-to-speed experience.
And one thing I forgot to mention is, to keep us on time and keep us moving, we have a team of timekeepers. You guys want to stand up really quickly? And we have tools, too. Can you go ahead and, so you will get a warning. (music playing) We actually, what we wanted to do is get Jaws music. We would start playing once it was time to start playing the music points of Jaws, but couldn't pull that off. So basically, what's going to happen is when you're asking a question or making a point, because you don't only have to ask questions, you can say, "I just want to make a comment about something." After about a minute, Leslie's going to give you a gentle dong, which basically means, "Hey, you know, I'm going to start getting your point. We're still waiting for that." And after another 30 seconds or so, Andy's going to hit you. Joni, I'm sorry. Joni's going to hit you over the head with a bat. Not really. But so that'll just keep us moving. Look, it doesn't mean it's the only time you get a chance to talk, but everybody else wants to say things, too, so we have to do that. And I don't want to have to be the guy to enforce that, so if you're brief, it's better. All right. You guys ready to go?
Clark, one question. Would it be easier for you people to understand or hear Clark if he had a mic? Or can you hear him fine now?
Do you guys hear me okay, or is the mic better?
He's coming through pretty good.
Mike's better. Put it on. You gotta act like the rest of us.
All right.
How do these things, how do these work? Put it in your pocket? You put it in your pocket, and I'll figure out what's...
All right.
(inaudible)
Yeah, one of those can be sent to rogue, so that's a good point. That's the reason I wasn't going to wear one, is so that you guys can share.
We can hear everything.
Okay.
(inaudible)
Sure. We'll... Put the headphones on so we can hear it right there.
Yeah, I didn't understand anything. (laughter)
So how is it?
Wear it? I feel totally funny. Does it go under your collar?
(inaudible)
Okay, so let's start by kind of setting the stage. What I'm going to do, each of you guys is going to have two minutes to kind of give an opening salvo. And it isn't a salvo of, "Here's my opinion on the world." It's actually just trying to get everybody up to speed. Help us understand the issues that we're talking about. How did we get here? Provide a little bit of context, a little bit of history. And each of you is sort of involved in different projects, so you're going to try and tie that history back to the project that you're speaking to, but help us understand, you know, how did we get here? How did we arrive? What are some of the big choices we faced? And you each have two minutes to speak today. So you want to start, Dan? You don't have to.
I'll be more than happy to. How do we start? Where did we come from? How did this happen? And I mean, we can go from the beginning of time, but I don't want to bore you. Well, we're going to, what I'm going to try to explain to you is, what CDOT, or what the access plan, or the access control plan is really meant to do is be a building foundation for local needs versus transportation needs, and try to get both needs out there. So the access plan is really a way for us to plan for the future, to do something, to identify all the accesses along the State Highway 82 corridor, and plan for it, so we don't mess anybody up or we don't forget anything. So because we only have opportunities once a generation, basically, so we want to take advantage of those opportunities and start planning this corridor a little bit better. So there isn't a curb cut every 15 feet away, like other communities, for example, Grand Junction, the Grand Junction North Avenue corridor. So we really want to look at that, but also look at the safety of the highway. As everybody knows, intersections, those are conflict points, and we need to manage those conflict points as best as we can and provide access to the local street systems as well as to private property and to balance that. So that's what the access control plan is really meant to do, is to look at the long-term access for this corridor. And, you know, it's a tough document, and it's, there's a lot of give and take. (music playing) I'm done. Good job.
Our group comes to the table with the idea of looking at the whole project, and when you look at the access control plan and the bridge, there are only two parts of the whole puzzle. It's kind of like building a house. You build the garage, the bedroom first, without building a foundation. Doesn't work very well. So we're looking at this whole project and saying, there's an organization called EPO, which stands for National Environmental Policy Act, which, when you look at a project like this, you're supposed to consider all aspects of it. And some years back, like two years ago or less, CDOT and the city did what they called the Quarter Optimization Plan and Study. And that plan showed there should be another route through Glenwood. We're not here to say, "Run it up the river, run it over Cottonwood Pass, run it through the South Canyon, run it through No Name." We're here to ask for an environmental impact study, which CDOT is not doing. The environmental impact study will take into consideration the traffic patterns, the river, the people, the way the city is, and through that, they'll come up with what they think is the best plan. Whether we like it or not, that's something else. But that's what our group is here to do, is to try to make these people do this, slow down, look at what's going on, get some decisions, quality decisions, that will help us all. We're not here to ruin anybody's life. We're here to try to make it better. And as we've all talked, years ago, if council would have done something different... Are you getting ready to ring that, Leslie? I want you to do it. If council would have put the highway on Midland or someplace else, you know, the people moved to town and would just say, "Oh, that's the way it is." Well, today, we've got some real challenges, and we think by fixing the bridge or replacing the bridge, all it's going to do is put more traffic on Grand Avenue, and that solves nothing, except puts more traffic there, makes it tougher for everybody. And we feel that if they looked at the whole project and they didn't replace the bridge, put the bridge someplace else, they wouldn't need an access plan or a bridge. They might be able to do something totally different. That's it, Clark. Thanks.
So I'm here to talk about the Grand Avenue Bridge Project, and especially how it relates to this larger mobility issue that John's talking about. You know, two years ago, I co-presented the State Highway Quarter Optimization Plan to our State Transportation Commission. The consultant was also there with the hard-to-read parts of the spreadsheet. I spent some time looking, you know, spending a little bit of refresher time with that, and it's very clear in there. It lays out specific timelines of how to get some kind of a mobility issue into the planning process. That's really something that hasn't happened yet. It's a big project. You know, you talk about an EIS. Usually, you do an EIS, an environmental impact statement, if you have construction funding identified. There's no funding identified right now. CDOT's really in a bit of a budget crisis. You know, the gas taxes haven't been raised since the early 90s. We're really in a maintenance mode. We're lucky that in 2009, we got the faster legislation passed that gives us about $250 million a year for bridges. You know, this bridge is crumbling all over America. So I think we'll have some good discussion about that, but I think it's really important to differentiate that our Grand Avenue Bridge Project is about a poor bridge. The faster money is for replacing or rehabbing poor bridges. We can talk about why rehab was not a good alternative. We did study it, and we're ready to help shine a light on that a little bit better, so thanks.
Before Jim starts, if you all want to stand all the time, that's totally cool. We are in a gym by the, anyway. I mean, you're getting a little bit of workout in. But if you guys want, there are some chairs over here, and we can pull some down off the walls, like if you want to take that moment to... You guys good? All right. Well, we'll forgive you if you end up going over there in a few minutes because your legs are getting tired. All right, Jim.
So I was actually hired by the Downtown Development Authority to help them work on some design issues in the downtown. And as part of that, we were looking at eight grand, and I got sucked into this bigger thing. So like I said, I've only done this about three weeks. We work around the west, and we work a lot in mountain towns, and these kinds of issues happen everywhere. Glenwood is a little bit unique in that you have some amazing assets. The topography, which puts you on the valley floor, but makes your community scenic. The two rivers, which divide the community, but are wonderful assets. The railroad, which I think is an asset. I-70, which is an asset. But all of those make this a complicated place. And these issues are going to be tough. It's basically our fate, I think. I've been in a lot of meetings in the last few weeks. I've been to a DDA workshop, a council workshop. I've been to an open house, and now I'm to a forum. There's a lot of community process here, and I have, in every one of those meetings, sensed an enormous amount of goodwill in this community. The citizens here are amazing. You disagree on a lot of things, and you like to debate about those things, but it's an incredible community. And I think that all of this process is making you stronger as a community, which is good because when this issue, however it's settled, is settled, there will be more like it in your future, and you'll have other battles that you'll have to fight. You know, the question of barriers and getting across them is something many communities deal with when they're working in Flagstaff. They have 110 trains a day through Flagstaff, so it's like a river of coal. And so getting more crossings across that has been important for them to tie their community back together. A similar issue that you're dealing with with the Colorado River and the Roaring Fork. Portland, Oregon, you know, is working to get a six bridge across their river because connectivity is important. So I just want you to know, you're in good company nationally. I think, the other thing I want to say, and then I'll make a last point, is that I'm really impressed, and these guys aren't really my client. Very often, maybe once every five or six years, do we do any work for CDOT, so I'm not pandering. What CDOT has done in this community is pretty amazing to me. Their commitment to the community, their commitment to the process. One of the first things I did working on this project was I went out and saw the pipes hanging off the edge of the bridge and that hole exercise. Pretty unusual. And, you know, that sounds like lunch, and that makes me hungry. So what I've kind of dedicated myself to in the past few weeks is, how can we help Glenwood Springs be strategic about the opportunities? And I'll be bringing up that, bringing that up more.
That's great. Thanks, everybody. Okay, so let's move into another question here. One of the things that has been of interest to everybody in the community, and you guys provided a little bit of the "how did we get here?", but people wanted to know a little bit more specifically, how did we get here? Which is to say that there's a lot of interest in the process. Whenever you deal with a big community decision like this, people are interested in, you know, what information was used? What did we analyze? Why did, what was the decision-making process? Jim just mentioned a lot of community process. What was used? So if you guys could shed a little bit of light, and I actually want to focus on Dan and Joe, talk a little bit about the information that has been used, whether it's studies or data, that has sort of helped get to the point of either deciding if these projects are important to do or what happened. So let's start with you, Joe.
Sure. Thanks. Again, you know, this is an environmental assessment we're going through. There's really three ways of clearing a project. This bridge came up on the poor list for the Colorado Bridge Enterprise. It's, if you read the actual legislation, you know, it's a designated bridge. It's got to be rehabbed and replaced. So we put the rehab option in as an alternative. We clearly defined a purpose and need, and I'm going to read that to you, so I want to make sure I get it right. Improve connectivity between downtown and Glenwood Springs and the Roaring Fork Valley with the historic hot springs pool area and I-70. Try to get a picture of that in your mind because it's really important to this other larger mobility issue. So, you know, right now, the current bridge, when it was built in 1953, is a two-lane bridge. It was great. It had sidewalks. In 1969, it was widened, the sidewalk, the pet piece was cantilevered over the side. And then, of course, in 1985, the city took on the pet bike bridge and built a separate structure. Those lanes are only nine foot four and a half inches wide. The standard is 12 foot wide. That's part of what drives the poor rating. It's, you can look in your glossary, functionally obsolete, and it's also got some structural deficiency issues along with it, so.
And you're going to speak more to those, too? There's some questions to...
Yep, I'll speak more to those, get a little bit more in-depth with them. But, you know, as far as this purpose and need, you know, the other part of it is, you know, making sure that you, the alternatives that we develop, that they meet those purposes and needs. You know, we had 12 build alternatives that we looked at. We also had about four or five from the public that came in and we analyzed. And, you know, honestly, the ones that are outside of that area that I described are just, they don't clearly, they don't meet the purpose and need. They don't remove the functional obsolescence part of the bridge, so.
Let's get, yeah, let's hold on to that. We'll come back to it. Dan, can you describe a little bit again, sort of, just the information used in, for any, it could be this access control plan or other access control plans, but what information, studies, data, do you guys kind of look at? What's driving the decisions?
Sure. You know, we actually started about the access control plan. We started January of 2012, getting the data. And what we mean by getting data is, we looked at all the intersections. We counted the intersections. We counted the intersections in the morning, we counted them in the afternoon. We actually counted them in two different places, because we knew there was, you know, winter traffic and summer traffic. And we, what we tried to do is have a really good look and understanding what Glenwood Springs or Grand Avenue, what kind of traffic it really had. And, once we did that, we did an operational analysis, looked at what's currently, if we, currently, what the traffic is, how much traffic there is, how much traffic at intersections, what the level of service is, or how good does it operate? And I don't, I'm trying to be simplified. What we also did is, we actually did a matrix. We sat down and looked at not only transportation needs, we looked at community needs, we looked at our alternatives of what needs to happen, especially downtown, because we recognized that was a very sensitive area, and there's a lot of, a lot of things going on, a lot of attributes or positive stuff. So we spent a lot of time, and where we got to is we had, we got down to three or four alternatives, and then we got down to the decision-making with our matrix and looked at it. We, we shared it with city council, we tried to share it with folks. We had two public meetings, we had one-on-one meetings, over 40 of them. We had over 160 comments. I mean, a lot of public involvement, so that was pretty good. Anyway, the bell's ringing, and I feel like Pablo's dog.
You'll get more chances to talk about it. John or Jim, do you guys have any just very brief comments to speak to the information? We're going to ask another question.
Clark? The one thing I would say is, CDOT says they've had these meetings. This is the first public meeting where the public is going to speak and ask questions. Otherwise, just put a note in the box. We'll look at it. If you don't get that.
Okay. Okay. Noted, and I want to give you guys a chance to speak to that a little bit, and I think, you know, it was really interesting to the focus groups, we had a very wide array of opinions on public process, and we asked specifically about it and said, hey, people feel like there's been enough public process? Do people feel like there's been enough information provided? And interestingly, you really did get differing opinion, and so that speaks to the need that probably the process wasn't perfect. You're probably right. And at the same time, for some people, they were getting the information and the process they needed. So it's going to be interesting tonight to see sort of how that goes. But the point that I think John makes around the importance of just having open community dialogue for these types of things is important. Okay, one more question on this topic, and then we're going to take a couple of questions from you all, and then move on. I want you guys to try and comment on this briefly, and it's really about the pace of the projects, and, you know, a lot of people have mentioned that they're moving quickly. John mentioned that in his remarks. And Dan, I think you already spoke to this in terms of the timeline for your project. Can you just give us a sense of, are these projects kind of moving at the typical speed for which projects of this nature go? And what are the sort of complications or implications, I should say, of delay? If we do slow things down, is that a real big problem, or is it, hey, no problem? So the first part of the question, Dan, if you can just speak to, you know, how does this project, in terms of the pace that it's going, relate to other projects of this nature?
Really, the pace of this is right on target. You know, we've got probably over a dozen public meetings. We've had, we had a visioning session early on where we brought in a lot of business owners and talked about, you know, what's really important to you? And we learned a lot about, you know, the walkability downtown and how important that was both in the, you know, after construction and really during construction. You know, we got, we heard some stories about, you know, when the Pet Bridge was redempt recently, that, you know, that was a real noticeable hit economically. You know, we learned about, we asked questions with this, when we get into the construction, do you want us to phase the demolition of it? Or would you rather see some accelerated bridge construction techniques and just try to close it down for like a month or two?
So the pace feels kind of, in terms of where you guys are at? Now, let's ask, let's ask the second part of the question, which is, what are the implications of delay for a project like this?
Right now, you know, we're committed to expanding all the funds for the construction by the end of 2017. So, right now, we're about 16 months into our process. We're probably about 14 months away from a decision document on the environmental assessment. We'd have a few more months of final design. As I indicated earlier in public meetings, we're, we're taking an innovative contracting approach to this project. We, I don't think anybody in this room wants the quote "low bidder" building this project. We do a lot of low bid work, and, you know, we put together a set of plans that's pretty thick.
I know, I would just want to keep moving, and that's a very good point. So, so in terms, the biggest, the biggest point of delay is going to be around, there's some construction dollars out there that are linked to it.
Yeah, we have commitments with the Colorado Bridge Enterprise, which is essentially our transportation commission. They want to, they want to get this money spent. They've got bond funds, and they don't want to be holding on to the money too long, so.
Okay, great. And I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
Dan, do you want to just sort of brief points, you know, those two questions?
In terms of timeframe, we're, we're actually about 16 months into it as well. Usually, an access control plan takes about 12 months, 12 to 13 months to get through. And this is not the first community that we've done this in. We've actually done it in probably about 15 western, western Colorado towns and cities in access control plan, just to figure it out. In terms of delay, you know, we are pretty much down to the last part. I mean, it's fine, we have a draft plan, and we feel pretty confident with it. So we're ready to make a decision on it and move forward.
Jim, did you want to make a?
Yeah, I don't think we're hearing the answer in either of those cases, and I know it's a tough, because it is a black line. But, but what is the implication of delay for the bridge funding? Does the money go away? Does it, does it just make life complicated for you here? I mean, what, how, how serious is that problem?
Good clarification there, Jim.
I really don't see the money going away. I think it would be more of our, our commitments to our leadership over in Denver, that we have a schedule. We have what we call scheduled performance indicators on all of these projects. They track them all, and they want us to be within 90% of our targets. And, you know, we feel like we gave a generous schedule, and we feel we're right on target for it. And so we really, we're impressed with the input that we've gotten on the bridge. I think a lot of it's been positive, and especially when you get the mobility issue out of it and just stick with the system quality, bridge replacement part.
And same question for Dan. The, so, the, you know, you want to wrap these things up, you don't want them to go on forever, and you are being evaluated in Denver for the performance and all that kind of. But, but an access control plan can take how long it takes, or is there, is there like a shutdown date?
Well, there is, there isn't an official shutdown date, but the question, it's a, it's a great question. The best way is, you know, we budgeted so much money for this plan, the access control plan. We are, we are probably 90, we're actually 105% of what our budget is. So we, we've done our budget for the access control plan, and that's mainly because of the public involvement that's gone. So as far as more money for us to do an access control plan, we don't have any more money for that.
Great. Can somebody help move the microphone around? Because let's take, let's take a couple of questions from the audience. Got one in back here. We got one, well, we got one right here, too. That's, that's very easy, so. Go ahead, see you next.
Thank you very much. From what I'm hearing in the tone of the discussion so far, from what I'm hearing in the tone of the discussion so far, there's little that could occur here tonight that would lead to the conclusion that there will be no rebuilding of that bridge. Is that correct? Forget about the access plan and the details. The bridge decision sounds to me, projects having a life of their own. This is it.
Well, it is a, it's followed by NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act. The outcomes can be, you know, there will be a decision document, hopefully in May. The outcome of that could be that it's a no-build alternative. A decision could be that, the decision is a finding of no significant impact, which opens the door to the next phase in final design. Or it could be that there are significant impacts that have been discovered, and the project elevates to a EIS, environmental impact statement.
So, follow-up, if I may. What's, what's the likelihood of that happening? In other words, project says, ain't going to happen?
I really think it's fairly unlikely, given that the Colorado Bridge Enterprise, again, being charged with, that was put into place in 2009, there was 128 poor bridges, and we had very limited bridge replacement money to the federal government. It still would be a poor bridge. The rehab would be extremely messy. There's fatigue issues. Every single one of those girders would have to come out and be modified, the deck would still have to be raised to get the clearance over the railroad. I don't think anyone would really like to see a rehab happen there.
Okay, so the next question will get back.
I have a couple of questions. The first one, as I've never seen a staging area for the construction site, I can't see an area that would qualify to stage for construction. And what is it, how does it interfere with the daily lives of Glenwood Springs' traffic and people? And why hasn't there been more than one inspection report done on this bridge? There should be at least three.
So here's what we want to do. The first question, which is around staging of construction for the bridge.
Specific construction sites.
Right. And do you want to know sort of about the, what analysis has been done to look at that? Or do you want to just know, do you have a little game plan?
I would like to know how it's going to be set up.
Okay, okay. So here's what let's do. The second question was sort of what information, what studies have been done, right?
Well, had there been more than one, if we can't just trust one, if we can't trust two, we shouldn't need three.
So let's get after that, and then let's put the bridge question in the, we're getting to that bridge topic in a minute, so. Just because we have to, we're getting to the end of this portion. Don't worry, we'll get to it.
So we'll tackle the one about the staging.
Yep. No, no, the staging is going to come, I'm going to talk about the bridge. So if you could just tackle a question of the study.
Okay, the study, basically, our bridges that are of that condition are inspected every two years. And there's a report that has been done by our staff bridge unit over Denver. As part of our study team, one of the sub consultants, AMAC, has done a thorough report listing all of the conditions, you know.
You're the only, you're the only company that was inspected, is what I'm saying. We need other inspection reports. It's not true.
There, you know, it's pretty, pretty objective material.
That's right.
We haven't really seen the need to go back and try to re-inspect it.
Okay, so let's keep moving. We're going to, don't worry, there's going to be more and more questions, especially if you're, if you've got a question about a specific topic that isn't sort of the information that was used to get us here. We're going to, we're going to keep moving, and we'll, we'll get there. So, John, this is, this, all of these conversations, sorry, all these conversations we've been having recently, and as we all know over decades, about the bypass, and, and there's been conversations around the challenge of having a highway running through the downtown and through the community. And help us understand how we have got here in terms of, you know, where citizens to save Grand Avenue is coming from. How did you guys arrive at the point of saying, now is the time to work on this? Why is the bypass reemerging so strongly now?
Clark, I think the answer is, when you look at rehabbing the bridge, replacing the bridge, all it does is put more traffic on Grand Avenue. It doesn't do anything as far as getting the traffic off Grand Avenue. And you know, living here, what it's like to sit downtown and try to have a meal outside or have a conversation with somebody. It's just impossible. And if you look at a city like Durango, you come in on the north end of town, you come to Camino Del Real, go right around the right-hand side, you either go to Cortez, or you can go to Pagosa Springs. And you look at Breckenridge, you come in on the north side of town, go around the west side, and the traffic can go that way. You look at Delta, Ramontos, they've got a bypass. That's really a bypass that goes around the, the north side of town. What we want to do is just take the traffic, get it off Grand Avenue, and there are studies that have said, yes, we need another route through town, but as I shared with you earlier, we're not here to say, you run up the river corridor. The EIS, if they'll do that, that'll tell you where it should go. And then, you know, Jim has shown some things, what Grand Avenue could look like without the traffic there. The other day, Jim made the comment that Grand Avenue was an ideal example of how cities, small western cities operate, and thought Grand Avenue looked pretty good the way it was. But when you start putting more traffic in there, and the other thing I think everybody needs to realize is that this is a regional problem. It's not a Glenwood Springs problem. If all we had up Valley were ranches, you know, no Aspen, no Bressault, no Carbondale, no Alshville, then we have a two-lane highway, no big care, no big deal. But since it's not that way, those cities are causing Glenwood to have this problem. And Glenwood's at the mouth of the river, and Glenwood's the one that's taking all the guff for it. So, some way, those people and the people of Glenwood have to do something to get this traffic off Grand Avenue, whether it's, you know, a reroute someplace.
So, let's kind of, let's talk about what that looks like in a couple of different ways, and I want to hear some comments from others of you now in the panel. One of the topics that came up a couple of times was the question of sort of this bridge versus the bypass. The idea that if you do one, if you do the bridge, you're sort of foreclosing options on completing a bypass or, or an alternative route. And, you know, I'd like to hear somebody speak to that, to the degree that, is that true or not?
Don't look at me, I'm the... Joe absolutely says, no, there's all kinds of opportunities to do that. We look at it as saying, Clark, you're going to take 60 million bucks, build a bridge, and why not take the 60 million dollars and try to solve some other problems with it? Do an EIS, look at the whole thing, and can we find a reroute of highway to do? Put the 60 million dollars in it. And Joe says, we only have 60 million dollars. We don't have more than 60 million dollars. The guy who used to be Joe's boss, Dick Crossland, said there was no money when they started four-laning, '82 to Aspen. Crossland says, money came. Same thing with Snowman's Canyon, no money. Money came. Now, are they calling Dick a liar? They say Dick doesn't know what he's talking about? But Dick made this comment in an open meeting like this, at the same community center, about four or five months ago. So, you know, with our friends in Washington, and all these people in Valley that donated for it, we should be able to come up with some funding to solve some of these problems.
Well, let's, funding is an important issue. I want to ask Joe to go ahead. This is a question we have further down on the list here, but let's just get to it, which is, can you quickly speak to the question of bridge funding and what it can and can't be used for?
Yes, and before I do that, I just want to make a clarification with John. He's talking about more traffic coming in as a result of our, our bridge replacement, and honestly, we're, we're taking it from nine foot four and a half foot wide lanes to 12-foot, and they're going to narrow down to 11-foot. Maybe a motorcycle could get past here and there, but it's not going to add, we're not adding any lanes. So, just want to make that clarification. We're not adding capacity with our project, so.
Okay. So, and so now, a funny question is briefly, you know, can you very briefly explain what the bridge funds can be used for? Because we've heard this, you know, it's been in the papers a couple of times, and the opinion pages, hey, why not? You know, 60,000 or 60 million bucks, let's, you know, we can do whatever we want with it, or can.
You know, getting back to that, that purpose and need statement that I read, this is Colorado Bridge Enterprise funding. It's, it goes specifically to rehab or replace the designated bridges, the bridges that are rated, you know, under 50. It's not about adding, you know, a bypass or a mobility kind of an answer. I do have a slide that, that I showed, you know, at our January 9th public open house, we had conversation circles, and I had a map of the entire area. And really, our study area for the bridge is, you know, just really several blocks wide. It goes from 8th Street to 6th Street, and it goes over to the interchange. It doesn't go over to Midland. It doesn't encompass... It doesn't encompass the Rafta Transit Corridor. You know, those are different purpose and need issues that, that, that really are, are just very different.
Okay, so this money can't be spent, just to sort of help the chamber in their effort to try and-
Yeah, it cannot be spent for, uh, for that kind of a, you know, things that are outside of the purpose and need.
And, and John, to be clear, I wanna point out, you said, hey, there, there might be other funding out there too, but, so I'm not trying to say that it's impossible. I'm just trying to say for this funding, it's, it's, it's got a purpose. So Jim, I'd like to hear from you on the larger question that I started with of, you know, are we foreclosing on options if we do one project or the other? What are our choices? What are we talking about?
You know, before he answers that, let me ask that question in a different way. Will any potential design of an alternate Highway eighty-two location be foreclosed either physically or economically because of the bridge replacement design? In other words, will the present design destroy any reasonable solution for a bypass?
So did everybody hear the question? Will any, well, okay, so the question was, you just basically took my question and made it more specific. Will any design of the bridge replacement that's being considered, um, basically foreclosed on an option for, or on any option for a bypass?
On the rail corridor. Anyway.
On the rail corridor. He said anyway, so I'm, I'm answering, I'm asking his question.
Well, I, I don't actually know. I think that's a technical question for the OT and I can come back to your question in a minute, but I, I don't actually know the answer.
You know, Clark, I think this would be a great opportunity to show slides, uh, six, seven, eight, nine, Angie, if you can. Um, Floyd, I knew you'd be here, so I knew this would be one of the questions. And, you know, we've, we've taken it seriously. I know that, you know, certainly with the quarter optimization study that was done, um, that had twenty-two alternatives, um, some of them are on the rail corridor, some are out further to the west, like there's a Deveraux interchange and certainly using Midland all the way to-
We don't have a lot of time.
So, so, um, basically, short answer is no. It actually makes it better.
Floyd?
Um, you would've come down at a six percent. And just so everyone understands, in nineteen seventy-nine, um, Centennial Engineering did a, a study, this is like a scanned image from their nineteen seventy-nine report. If you can take a look at, at the bottom there, you can see that, uh, probably doesn't jump out at you, but the cross street, um, is over the top of Interstate seventy. So you'd have to totally reconfigure the interchange. You'd have to, to bring those berms down that the interstate's on and, and run the connecting road over the top because it's too steep to get from that area. So here we are, the first one. Oh. So here we are, you know, Joe, you're gonna have to be really quick with this. Okay, so this is the nineteen seventy-nine report. Next slide, Angie, please. This shows a, a six percent grade. Here's a three percent grade and this is basically our bridge alignment for alignment three. And, and it shows how we can match in and it, it all works pretty cleanly. It actually, um, it, it's a much better grade matchup, so.
Okay.
There's one, there's one more slide too.
Okay.
And this is kind of a different perspective, but it kinda shows how, uh, US six matches in with it and how that would all work, so.
So, so you're saying from a feasibility perspective, uh, the current bridge proposal, current alternative does not, uh, reduce the option that was studied in seventy-nine?
That's correct. And that would address your physical question. You asked about economic question. Um, you know, I've heard that a lot when we put concrete on Grand Avenue, it's, you know, don't let them do that. They'll never build a bypass if they put concrete. Honestly, that's, it's a little short-sighted. We don't really think that way. Um, some kind of a mobility, um, project, you know, if it were brought up, if it got, you know, the, the community support and was brought to the elected officials and through the, the planning region, you know, and it got environmentally cleared and designed, you know, good things happen to, to projects that are, are cleared and ready to go.
So, um, hopefully that gets to your question.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, let's move on to, to one more question here that I think that question tees up pretty nicely, which is, what are the viable options? I mean, can we talk about what are the viable options for reroute or bypass? Um, you know, there have been a lot of studies done. If you guys can help us explore what those are, that would be great. So John, I think you're first on the spot.
Clark, the, the options that I'm aware of, one is to come over Cottonwood Pass, leave Gypsum, come over Cottonwood and have the, uh, highway come out south of town about where Holy Cross is and then continue on and come out at South Canyon. And that way, the people that are going up Valley don't even come through Glenwood Springs. Only the people come here that wanna come here. Another option is, uh, you, you hear people talk about east of Noni, run a bridge across the river there, go through the mountain, come out south of Wal-Mart. And they say, if they did that, it would still be quicker to go that way than it would come up Grand Avenue. And so you can come up there and you can go west, you turn west, you go east, you go east. I don't know that I agree with that. That's just-
So in that case, you're tunneling through from Noni to Wal-Mart?
You're tunneling through. The other option is that there are all kinds of variations. One is to, uh, come off the east side of the Y and follow railroad corridor right up beside the, uh-
Along the river.
Along the river. The other is to, I think, go west, isn't it? And, uh-
And Midland?
Well, move the intersection west, come across the railroad tracks, come up Midland partway, go across the river and then go up that way. And another is to do more with the, uh, West Glenwood exit and, uh, bring four lanes of Midland that way. And those are, those are some of the ones that I've heard and there are probably other ones. And there's also the Centennial report that Joe just showed.
Okay. Jim?
Well, I just have questions, I guess. The, the, uh, so that interchange, the primary interchange with Centennial eighty-two is also how we get access to Glenwood for people going to Glenwood, right? I mean, we have the West Glenwood interchange, but, so, and the bridge is how you get across the river. So wouldn't we still need at some point to replace the bridge?
Oh, absolutely. It's, um, it's, it's got a couple of issues with it, you know, other than the functional and structural. Part of the functional is that it, it really creates a, a dangerous situation at the East bound on ramp that is not a code on ramp, as you know.
Would, would, um, if there were a significant amount of traffic that somehow was being bypassed around Glenwood Springs, would that change the design of the bridge? I mean, how, how would that, or would it change the, the way you guys have designed the bridge?
Um, you know, in reviewing the, the quarter optimization plan today, you know, there's a statement in there about replacing the bridge and it's current, you know, basically the same size. I think right now, we're looking at like eight additional feet on each side, so you would need a new bridge. You know, that bridge is sixty years old. It was built with probably a fifty-year design life and it's not getting any younger. It's, it's, we've had chunks, you know, we've get calls from the Hot Springs Lodge and Pool. It goes over their parking lot and chunks of concrete would fall off regularly. It's a old bridge.
So I'm, so I'm learning interesting things tonight that I didn't know. Um, the, so if the bridge would still need to be replaced and you would still want an interchange so people could get into Glenwood, you'd still have to hook the bridge to the interchange. So it sounds almost like the, the issue of, should there be a bypass route could be separated from the issue of should the bridge be replaced? Or is that kind of where you, what you're suggesting?
Thanks for picking up on that. I tried to say that about three or four times tonight. Um, it takes a while though.
Well, I'm, well, I mean, I have to hear it, so I'll take it.
But, uh, you know, they're clearly separate, you know, one's a mobility issue, one is a system quality, you know. It's a maintenance thing, it's the, the bridge. If you just let it, it would, it would self-destruct.
And then I could answer your question. I, um, that's good to know and I think it, it may be comforting to some folks. I think, you know, um, the days of new alignment roadways in the United States are almost over. We need to accept that things have changed. Um, and, you know, we, we've worked on projects like this in a number of places and it is really hard to get money for new alignment roadways, especially ones that have major environmental impacts and trade stops across the country. But I, John, I'm not being critical, do I use a creative ideas? We, we've been trying to get a project funded out in West Maui, um, around Lahaina for, I mean, I've worked on it for ten years and people worked on it twenty years before I got there. And, and the, um, the money's going away and the economy's changing and we're moving into more of a multimodal kind of, uh, environment. And, um, so I think it's, I am comforted a little bit and Leslie actually asked me this, Leslie Bethel asked me this question last week and I probably gave the wrong answer. I didn't know it was feasible to connect the interchange to a new bridge across the river as the interchange is on, so that you could do a bridge, you know, along the Centennial line. I didn't know that. That's, that's good to know. That's a little comforting, but I don't think it should be too comforting because I think that the likelihood of a bypass being built is somewhat small, quite honestly. I think it's, it's not, uh, I, if I were an investor, I wouldn't wanna bet on it. And so, um, you know, well, so I'm sort of trying to balance this a little bit and say, you know, that, that maybe the building of the bridge and replacing the bridge and redoing